Mr. Promo. Let the record reflect that Mr. Perillo was not here. Mr. Kennedy? Let the record reflect that Mr. Kennedy is also absent.
Great, thank you Madam Secretary. Can you read the statement of compliance?
Pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act, public notice that this meeting has been given by the Land Use Planning Board of the Township of Mount Holly on January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five in the following manner: By posting written notice on the official bulletin board in the Mount Holly Township Municipal Building, by mailing written notice to the Garland County Times and Courier-Post, by filing written notice with the Secretary of the Land Use Planning Board, by filing written notice with the clerk of Mount Holly Township, and by mailing written notice to each person who has requested copies of the regular meeting schedule and who has prepaid any charges fixed for such services.
Great, thank you Madam Secretary. Before we proceed with the rest of the agenda, I would like to make a note for any members of the public who are interested that the applications concerning thirty-one to thirty-five High Street, Salvito Enterprises LLC and seventy-eight to eighty High Street, Advanced Environmental Services LLC are not being heard tonight. Those will be heard presumably at the next meeting as long as the applicant wishes to do so. But for anybody who was interested in offering comment on thirty-three to thirty-five High Street or seventy-eight to eighty High Street, please be advised that those applications will not be heard tonight.
They will be heard so long as they are complete and written notices provided are heard. Nineteenth meeting at six P M. So the board cannot entertain comment or testimony relating to either of those two applications.
Thank you very much Madam Solicitor. Returning to the agenda, do I hear a motion to approve the last meeting minutes for February? No, we're not doing that? Sure, let's do that. We're going to rearrange the agenda a little bit. In the interest of having a full crew moving forward, we are going to jump straight to the introduction and notes of office for the newly appointed members. Mr. Bailey, Mr. Dow, are we doing them together or separate?
Yes.
Together, great.
All right, and would you raise your right hand and state, repeat after me, aye, state your name.
Aye.
You solemnly swear or affirm?
You solemnly swear or affirm. I'll be swearing.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Do it together.
Oh, do it together.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. It's equal.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established.
And to the government established.
In the United States and in this state.
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform.
All the duties of the office of.
All the duties of the office of.
Mount Holly Township Land Use Planning Board Member.
Mount Holly Township Land Use Planning Board Member.
Class two, class four. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. And if you would each sign them so that I can...
Great, thank you Madam Solicitor and welcome to our new members. Returning to the agenda, Madam Solicitor, are we ready to hear a motion concerning approval of the minutes from last meeting, which I believe is February?
Um, I don't believe that we have... Mr. Chairman, I've not had a chance to prepare those minutes, so I ask for a continuation to the next meeting.
No problem, thank you, Madam Secretary, and we will, yes, we will proceed with that continuation and keep an eye out for those minutes at the next meeting. Moving on to old business, resolutions.
Before we get there, sorry.
It's okay.
It's just, we're just trying to clean up a few things. Can we do Resolution twenty-two-five dash candidacy equipment of a certain Land Use Board Secretary?
Yes, I missed that. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. We are now moving to the item above introduction and oath of newly appointed members, appointment of Land Use Board Secretary. Madam Solicitor, Madam Secretary.
Yeah, this is a resolution because we had resignation of our prior Land Use Board Secretary. We were fortunate enough through the application process to get a number of great qualified candidates and Michelle was hired by the township. So we wanted to have her. She's been on board for several weeks and we just wanted to do a resolution confirming that and also ratifying some fielding work that the prior substitute clerk did. So the resolution accomplishes that and points Michelle for the rest of the year and ratifies any spare actions which may have been done by prior board secretaries. So is there a motion to approve the appointment?
Motion to approve, twenty-two-five dash about ten. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Let's do a vote by affirmation. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Seeing, do I see any ayes? Seeing none, the motion passes.
Abstentions.
Or abstentions. Seeing none, the motion passes. Congratulations, Madam Secretary. Okay. Hopefully that means we can get back to the agenda as we originally intended it. And with that in mind, we now move to resolutions. Do I hear a motion concerning the Resolution twenty-two-five dash oh-nine, twenty-two-five dash one concerning four thirty-four Newcombe Street? This was a resolution that be denied the relief that had been requested by the applicant.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We will again vote by affirmation. I'll jump straight to anybody who is not in favor, say aye. Do I hear any abstentions or accusations? Seeing none, the motion passes.
Uh, the court members who were not present would probably not see.
I'm trying to understand because I'm not familiar. I read the background.
If you didn't, if you weren't present for the application, you'd generally be abstaining.
Understood. Apologies if we rushed through that procedurally.
Mr. Limo alerted me that there might be a minor technical error on the title on the resolution. So we'll just authorize the board secretary to correct that there was an error in the voting. Yes, all right, we'll correct that.
Great, thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mr. Limo, and yes, we will correct that title and revisit this resolution if necessary as soon as possible. Moving on to the applications.
Well, we'll begin to the discussion first.
Ah, okay, so.
Why are you doing that?
I am, okay, so just for ease of, for ease of discussion, ease of debate, since at least one council member will not be able to hear the application tonight, we thought it would be best to move to discussion of the Section twenty-six review before proceeding to the application. This is a Section twenty-six review concerning the amendment of Chapter one forty-nine entitled Land Use. I will spare us all reading the entire line, but it concerns the creation of a new H L Health and Life Sciences District and other details are available in the line item under discussion. With that in mind, my understanding is that we're going to be hearing from a planner tonight concerning the proposed amendment. Madam Solicitor, is there anything that we should be taking care of before we swear in?
No, we're just that we're set to go.
Wonderful, okay.
This is referred by the Township Council to the board for consistency review for the proposed ordinance. So this is a regular business of this quarter. You swear, planter? You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and then you have to truth before the score?
I do.
And would just state your name for the record and your installation.
My name is Patrick Van Burnham. I'm a planner with Modern Model Resolutions.
All right, if you have a chance to review the proposed ordinance and can you describe it for the board and for members of the public so they can hear that and describe what it accomplishes?
Sure, so I have had the ability to review, review the ordinance that we're considering here tonight and sort of look at how it compares to recent master plans, master plan reexaminations that have been prepared for the township. And you'll see sort of early on that.
Do you have agendas? Do you have a chance for anyone? Are there any extra agendas anywhere?
Are there any doubt issues? Do you have it online?
Your first half, where would they go?
Would you like to go on the back table?
Yes.
Okay, well, cool. So again, as I mentioned before, just so to restate, I have had the ability to review the ordinance that's being considered here tonight for basically consistency with the master plan and master plan reexam that the township has pursued and adopted over the past couple of years, as recently as last year. You'll see pretty early on in review of the ordinance that the second line talks about how it's recommended in the master plan reexamination report to look at this area and look at how zoning districts could be established so that the township can govern by regulation rather than by variance, specifically as this area has been, you know, mixed of the hospital and residential area surrounding. So this would just be to clean up the boundaries in terms of what is existing out there with the landowners that are out there and sort of, you know, being all encompassing zone for health and life sciences rather than general where it was just lumped into the O B office building district. In our review, we, you know, designated a number of properties that currently fall within that O B district to be part of the health and life sciences zone as part of this ordinance. All of these are pretty, pretty contained in one area, pretty contiguous. I've prepared this map just for everyone. And as you can see, it's sort of two big slots in area that are connected in the areas surrounding Virgil Hospital, extending down Cedar Street and then the large area that is mostly a parking lot and then environmentally constrained areas there. And just for reference. And then just for reference too, this is another map that we prepared in reviewing the tax data. And this is looking at specifically those properties that are owned by the hospital as they are a big landowner in this area of the township and sort of how the proposed zone may match up with the lands that they own and, you know, they use. As you can see, it's pretty, it's pretty all encompassing overlap. There's sun lots here along Cedar Street that are also medical office uses. So they align with the objectives and sort of the principles and ideas of the H L zone as is being contemplated. And I think I'll leave this one up since it makes no sense. Should have brought the easel. But yeah, as mentioned before, this is for master plan consistency and I think that, you know, the biggest thing to keep in mind is that this was discussed in the master plan reexam and this is sort of an accomplishment of one of the goals and recommendations that's found in that report. And you'll find in our review and when I reviewed the proposed ordinance and how it compared to a prior zone, it's not drastic differences between the two. It's sort of maintaining the current uses, but just modifying the zone, the district and the boundaries a little bit. And with that, I can run through this.
Just a few basic questions. Do you feel though of the provisions to this ordinance enables, it focuses on residential hospital and hospital campus? Does this sort of update the zoning standards so that the hospital campus operates more like a hospital campus in modern day version as opposed to what was there and enacted many years ago?
Yes, I do believe that.
Maybe it promotes good planning principles?
Yes, I do.
And you believe that it advances goals of the master plan as consistent with the purposes of the master?
Absolutely.
I did have a question and I apologize for that. Mr. Name earlier, Mr. Van?
Van Burnham.
Van Burnham, thank you. So just to nip what I suspect are a couple of questions you might get from the public in the bud. I did notice that item number eighteen under permitted, under permitted principal uses is single family detached dwellings existing as of January first, twenty twenty-five. So just to clarify, all single family detached dwellings, that is to say, all single family residential homes within this area, they remain a principal permitted use. Is that correct?
So I have, yes, that is correct. Your understanding is correct. And I will note too that the zone, the district boundaries that are being contemplated currently don't contain any existing single family residences. So no one is, no one is being, no residential use is being zoned to a medical office use with this.
And to be clear, in the off chance we were to find out that there were somehow a single family residential use that was within these boundaries and that home were hypothetically damaged in a fire or a flood, is there anything that would prevent the owner of that residence from rebuilding that property under the new district?
It's constructed in kind, so it should be good to go.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
So residential uses are permitted in this zone?
Existing residential uses are permitted, so existing as of the beginning of this year.
But there's no existing residential uses?
Upon my review of the tax data from what I can find, I did not see any residential uses that are to be rezoned with this, no.
I heard you said, say the family. Does that mean there's multiple family units?
No, there's not. I don't think there's any residential uses.
That was the intent, was just to focus only on the lots owned by or under control of Virgil, right? To really define those and update those housing, those, those standards.
Yeah, and that, that's sort of what this, you know, this map may hope to envision. So you'll see it's realistically, you know, this building here at the corner of Cedar and Madison and then some lots as you travel down Cedar Street, but they're all conforming within the uses that are contemplated with this, with this ordinance. So they wouldn't be down zoned, rezoned out with this in any way. So those uses would be able to persist as they're permitted under the ordinance that's being contemplated. And then there are no residential uses that are to be rezoned as a part of this.
So who owns those other lots?
These blue with the cross, or these blue with the orange crosses?
Yeah, that's the hospital.
Yes.
Yeah, and what was the third one?
Um, so for instance, the, I intercheck, the square in the middle, that large gray area, that's why that's private residence.
Yes, that is a residential lot and that's why.
It's not, it's not.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not, the zoning for that property would not change at all.
Mr. Van Burnham, as a matter of housekeeping, I'm curious. Are you aware of health and life science districts in other municipalities in which you do business?
Yes, and typically they'll go alongside with the medical campus field that your board solicitor, you know, sort of tended to earlier. Yeah, so I believe in my review, I have a closer review of the surrounding. I don't have specific municipalities, but they're akin to the medical campuses and sort of, you know, providing modern care.
And if I may, I mean, what I'm getting at really is I want to make sure that we continue to have emergency services available in the community. Are, is a hospital or medical provider in general, do you think, and again, I know I'm asking as in a planner and not a medical doctor, somebody in that business, is somebody who operates in that field more likely to find a health and life science district to be amenable to the line of work as compared to how it was in the board? Like this is to say, are they more likely to do business somewhere where a health and life science district exists as opposed to where there's spots zoning to accommodate?
I believe so. This is, I mentioned before the term of governing through regulation versus the area. And so what this zone conceals and really drives home is that, you know, these uses are promoted in this area. It's in line with the prior zone to an extent, but it really drives home that it's aimed towards life sciences, health sciences. And so any use that is proposed within this zone that aligns with health and life sciences would be in a variance, which is the case for some of the areas around it now. Specifically those areas that are within the residential district around the existing O B zone. So again, yes, I would say.
And again, I'm sure this might come up from the public if we don't address it now. When we talk about health and life sciences, are any cannabis dispensaries eligible for principal zoning in this district?
I will double check.
I do not see them listed as a principal use, but of course I want to make sure that our understanding of this is correct based on your understanding.
Yeah, that is my understanding too. I just had to double check. So, and again, I think it's also, yeah, cannabis uses are not, are not contemplated for.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bailey.
So the exhibit that you referred to before, you compare that?
Yes, I did.
It's a colorized tax map?
Uh, yes.
And outlining what properties block and lot in this new H L zone, right?
Yes.
And you compare the first line?
Yes, I did.
And what policy is it a one? This was provided to the board previously or in a smaller version?
Um, I'm not sure that it was provided in a smaller version. An apology is worth it.
Sure, you can provide.
I absolutely can. I can send copies of this. This is no problem.
To the board secretary and also to the.
Yes, absolutely. So everyone can have copies of this, thanks.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board at this time, the board professionals?
The same thing with parking in the other zone is part of the current ordinance?
Uh, yes, so it's. So there are some things very specific to parking and loading in this zone, but it doesn't change the parking demand and it doesn't change the calculated parking demand for the use.
Now, is this the, is this the sort of thing that we need to turn to in public discussion?
Because I have other.
Wonderful. Seeing no other questions or comments from the board at this time, we now open the floor to public discussion. Public discussion limited specifically to the resolution that has been referred to us.
Limited to what?
To the resolution that's before us at this time? All right, as long as we're on the same page. With that in mind, are there any public comments on the Section twenty-six review amending Chapter one forty-nine entitled Land Use at this time? We'll go row by row. First row?
Anybody?
I'll look at the sound thing.
Go ahead.
Here's a soundboard, huh?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Let's see. My name's Nick Sedano, forty-seven Gardener Street. I have basically an administrative question about what happened to the master plan. As you guys are considering whether it's consistent with the master plan, I think that's part of it, right? And, but the way I heard it was, and the reexamination report. So this is the heart of my question, which is the September tenth meeting said that a motion is made to adopt the master plan reexamination report with the comment about the library lyceum added and refer it back to the township council. So I believe what happened, this is where I'm asking for your instruction, is that the reexamination report was adopted, not just accepted, no, adopted. Like that is the language of the master plan now. I believe that's what happened on September tenth?
Will we be able to clarify that?
I'm sorry, the attorney won't speak on that. It's just you guys? It seems like you're the one who knows more about it.
I would, I would strongly suggest the amount of pointing fingers will make them public comment.
Okay, I thank you for your suggestion, okay?
Your suggestion is taken as well, unless there are any other matters limited to the resolution before this.
I'll see you're not answering me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the first row? Anybody from the second row? Anybody from the third row?
Hi, good evening. Page the ALB one six six Concord Road. Can I find it online or can I take a picture if I can? Do you have it online?
No, it's not, it's not available online. This.
Are you gonna put it online?
I will send it to the board secretary for, for the board. I can't speak to what the, what the township.
You don't mind if I take a picture afterwards later? Is that fine? Okay, appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Warren Taylor Ford, one one seven Grand Street. Happy Monday, everyone. I just want to just hit on a couple of things as far as the health and life science. If you had said something earlier about ecosystems and exposure, I guess my question is, which I may have missed a meeting or two in between this, but for the residents who are calling me, the older residents that are asking if they live in this zone, I think there's one lot in the zone and the rest is just around. So I guess the question is, as far as ecosystems, what are we doing about water, air pollution? Are we gonna have a heat island? Is it gonna be like an urban island because the buildings are gonna go up around the different residents? Is that gonna be an environmental impact to the people that are living in that area, similar to a city effect? What is the exposure rate? You did say something about they're not gonna have a cannabis there. So is that a guarantee or is that just a, we don't know at this particular point and the hospital may decide later on down the line they're gonna, they wanna put some cannabis stuff in there? Are you able to answer any of those questions?
Cannabis is not a permitted use, so if they did come in and propose that, they would have to come in for a use variance. As far as the heat island, there's an open space requirement, so it's not gonna be wall paved. It's gonna be landscaping. It's gonna be stormwater management facility, just charred and paved. There's gonna be a balance between paved and unpaved, permeable and impermeable.
So they're gonna have something, I guess, like a flooding, if the people are living in that area, they're gonna have, I guess, what are you guys called about?
Detention base?
Leeches or something?
Stormwater management stations, basically.
So you will have a green area?
Yes.
And I guess, because you had mentioned health and housekeeping, like what, I don't know in what context you were mentioning in health and housekeeping with emergency services, like can you just explain that a little to me?
Yeah, sure. My concern is that if we, not that it's quite so transactional, but I, I don't think I'm alone in finding value in having emergency services in my community. My concern is that if the hospital continues to find itself put in a position where it is expanding through zoning as opposed to through regulation, they might find it easier to just do business somewhere else that is a little more prepared, just on a paperwork infrastructure level to handle the kind of businesses and operations that they are, that are required to provide emergency services, right? I hate to see us lose out on a hospital to another town just because we didn't zone as well as we could have.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public at this time concerning the Section twenty-six review amending Chapter one forty-nine? Going once?
Going twice.
We will now close the discussion concerning the Section twenty-six review amended Chapter one forty-nine.
Any other questions, members of the board, as to what the provisions are of the ordinance, its purpose and what your, what your duties are? This is a consistency review, so you've heard the testimony of other board's planning expert with respect to this ordinance was designed to provide an overlay just for the hospital area to normalize the standards who also could be more conducive to, just in the end of it general, and whether it's consistent with the laws and purposes of the master plan. So you've heard that testimony that you provided. You're just simply to report back to the council whether you think it's consistent? Sometimes boards will say, hey, we think this is great, but we recommend X, Y, or Z. I'm not really hearing that you recommend any changes to any of the standards.
I'm not hearing that.
Okay, so is there a motion to deem the, deem the draft ordinance consistent with the township master plan, report that lining back to the township council and authorize the board secretary a consultation with the solicitor to make that report back to council pending the adoption of the resolution? Or if we have, we have one prepared, to authorize the board chairperson to sign it?
Do I hear a second? And we will again vote by affirmation. I will give a few ayes and abstentions and a cutes. Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. We will have to go through a roll call. That was, uh, secretary.
Thank you. Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Hope staying.
Mr. DeFalco?
Richard.
Oh, my apologies.
Okay, vote.
Uh, Mr. Dow? Chairman Klein?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Sossier?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, you have seen?
Me?
Yeah.
You have seen.
Oh, there's something we should do.
Yeah.
All right, you said adopted. Very good.
Yes, um, so with that in mind, now that we have wrapped up the discussion, uh, any off chance anyone who's here only for that, uh, discussion concerning the section twenty-six review, um, we will now be moving on to other matters and, uh, you are free to leave unless you'd like to stick around for the discussion of the application twenty twenty-five dash five for forty-seven Mill Street. We're not taking, just to be clear, we're not taking that fight yet. We're just explaining, uh, the situation in case there's anybody who does not want to stick around with the next application.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a night. All right, now that we have had the chance to settle in, uh, we are going to move on to the application number twenty twenty-five dash five concerning Motel Love MJ LLC at forty-seven Mill Street. And so, um, we will now proceed with, uh, introducing the application.
We should just note that Chair James is not present and, uh, Councilor DeFalco refuses himself in a, as much of the press.
Good morning.
Mr. Webster is present.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name's Almory Webster, and I'm the attorney of the law firm, Colin Foley. Uh, we represent the applicant for Love NJ LLC, who was before you this evening seeking minor site plan approval with use in both areas related to operating a class-two cannabis manufacturing facility in the rear portion of an existing building located in forty-seven Mill Street in Mount Holly, designated as block fifty-one, lot forty-two on the official tax maps. Uh, the applicant is a licensee of, I mean, uh, leasing, I'm sorry, of four thousand six hundred and forty-six square feet of an existing one-story masonry building. The remainder, approximately sixty-two hundred square feet, is occupied by an existing cannabis retail facility. The property is located in the B-one central business zone with adjacent commercial uses and municipal parking lot in the rear. Uh, subject to the board's approval, the applicant intends to manufacture, um, cannabis products, including edibles, pre-bolted cannabis, and similar products, which do not entail extensive noise, odor, or other impacts to surrounding properties or uses. Use will be complementary to the existing facility and would activate this vacant portion of the building in the downtown center of Mount Holly. Uh, renovation necessary for this proposal, this proposed use would be primarily interior. The only exterior renovations will be improvements to the parking lot, a pad for storage associated with this use, and a small sign. While this is limited to light manufacturing use such as, not, which is not permitted in B-one central business district, and thus the applicant needs a use variance. Uh, but I think it's important to understand that this is very much like the back end of the bakery, which literally no one comes to, so it's a small, it's like where you make the Dunkin' Donuts. It's a small manufacturing facility. Uh, people come in, they manufacture, the trucks go out. Uh, in addition to, um, the use relief, we have a number of, uh, variances that we're gonna proceed with, a number of waivers, uh, that we'll go through as we produce our, our engineering testimony. We've received a host of letters, uh, from your professionals. Appreciate them working with us to get here tonight. Uh, they've been wonderful. And, um, with that, Mr. Chairman, um, I think the notices, uh, Ms. Garrity, what secretary has been provided, I think you guys had a chance to review it. There are no questions. I, um, I, my, my belief is this board has jurisdiction. Um, and if that's it, I'm happy to, uh, have my planner come up and, I'm sorry, my engineer come up and start, uh, our presentation.
Yes, we're gonna do a completeness review first. Um, let's pass it off first to, uh, the, uh, between the professionals, Mr. Limo, Mr. Mr. Kay, what would you, which one would prefer to go first?
Yeah, man, um, our better outlines, the submission waivers that are required.
Would you ask them to, to address it? I mean, it seems silly for you to recite it. For you to do it, it's their application, right? Or unless, I mean...
Either way, we do want to do, we, we started doing, we did this this afternoon, so. Yes, we could do it again.
We're asking for a waiver item nineteen, item twenty, item twenty-one, item twenty-three, item twenty-four. Oh, you, you want me to read them? Okay, that's fine. Okay, that's a problem. You wanna do it twice? Okay, that's fine, no problem. I'm happy to do it.
It's for the board.
I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to do it. Um, item number nineteen, we're asking for a waiver. Um, and this is a waiver, uh, for storm drainage structures, uh, pipes, um, swale, and dishes. And essentially, we're not doing any work on this property. It's just an adaptive reuse. So we're asking for a waiver, and according to Mr. Limo's letter, um, his office recommends granting this waiver. So we would ask for a waiver of item nineteen.
Mr. Ross, we usually get the testimony of, of the applicant's professional. For some things like, you know, mapping, that's sort of more administrative, we're okay with the representations of the council. It's just easier if you're talking engineer, engineer, planner, and stuff like that. My thought is to swear your engineer...
I'm happy to do that. Come on up.
Just ask me about it.
Yeah, no problem.
Do you swear in firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing above the truth?
Yes, I do.
Would you step to the mic and state the name of the board?
My name's Daniel Patterson. I'm a professional engineer and land surveyor licensed in the state of New Jersey.
Can you give me the board your?
I, I think I actually met Mr. Patterson before in several, um, Winslow and some towns.
Right, I've never been before this board, but I've been before him.
Right, but I think in Winslow with maybe Millville or somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so he could accept it as a professional engineer of the town.
Your license is currently in good standing? Yes, that's correct. Thank you. Patterson, let's talk about the waiver request. Uh, number nineteen, we, item nineteen, I think I did, but let's redo it. Uh, we're asking for a waiver of, um, proposed storm drainage structures, uh, and such.
Yeah, that's, uh, this item concerns, you know, existing or proposed drainage structures. We're not proposing any new drainage. We're not creating any additional impervious. There's no increasing of, from the site, so therefore we request it.
Any comments to make for your...
Yeah, hey, would you recommend?
Number twenty?
Uh, location of proposed water lines, valves, hydrants, and service connections, and all sewer lines. We're asking for a waiver, item number twenty.
Yeah, that's correct. You're asking for a waiver. There is a, a vestige of some utility connection details on sheet two of the site plan, but those are no longer needed, so that's why they come.
Are you able to address the comment that, uh, whether the, the usage or the capacity?
Yeah, I mean, we had a conversation with the, you know, the, with the applicant and the engineer. Um, the planners, uh, planners concerned, my concern was they had detailed in the plan for, uh, sanitary lateral and a water service. And, well, why were they there if they weren't proposing to install any new services? And, uh, the engineer indicated that they would be removing those details from the plan and providing testimony regarding, um, the other capacities and such. Yes, so. So with regard to the usage, I think the, uh, applicant will be able to provide more detailed information about that.
Do you want to say something?
So I just think you, you were said before, you don't, you don't need connections.
Correct.
So that's why you're asking, so you're gonna basically use what's out there now.
Number twenty-one?
Yeah, that's cross-sections, centerline profiles. Again, this item was triggered by the, um, potential, uh, connection of utilities, which is, you know, no longer being, uh, considered as part of the design, so that's not required no longer.
Is it satisfying?
It does. It has to do with that detail again, that, so the, the sanitary one coming off the plan. If you're specifying that there's, you can be, uh, using the existing sanitary and so on. And the waivers are appropriate.
We're just gonna give you the mic so that folks can hear. I want to, uh, you better...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Uh, the size of the water service going into the building and the size of the ladders coming out of the building, what are they?
The, uh...
The service, water service is...
The water service is estimated to be two-inch water service? I don't have a hard, you don't have a hard number.
But you really don't know. How about the lateral coming out?
Again, estimated as six.
As six inches.
It's a commercial building.
Six or four or...
Be pretty unknown.
The service is like one or two or... So how can you really estimate, or how can you really affirm that the water and sewer service are adequate for the processes you're gonna be going through in the building? And maybe we're not talking to a lot of good person here. Maybe we're gonna be talking to the owner? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think we'll, as I touched on before, I think, uh, the applicant will be able to explain the usage and I think he'll come to understand that it's not a significant burden on the system.
Are you, this question? Yeah, I mean, are any other questions or concerns? We can proceed with the, um, with that completeness review we left off at, uh, number twenty-one.
Yeah, maybe you could find out, I guess, the, the condition and just kind of let, let us know.
Yeah.
What they are and whether they will meet your needs.
Yeah.
Do we want the testimony now to satisfy what you're under?
I don't think they know what the sizes are.
No, they don't, but I think they'll come to present testimony to the fact that it's a pretty small usage.
Maybe we should wait.
Twenty-three. A location of existing and proposed signage, including materials, colors, method of attachment and support.
Yeah, there, now, there's something about this one, I guess. We, uh, had some discussion with the board professionals earlier about, uh, signage, namely, uh, traffic signage. There's a proposed, uh, stop and do not enter sign, uh, near the exit from the site, which we're gonna, I'll get into more detail, I guess, when I describe the, uh, site plan.
Yeah, just to clarify, there, it, it's an information sign and are permitted to square feet and just...
We're, we're talking in particular there about the loading of the sign.
Correct. Yeah, there's also a loading sign. No, we're talking about the traffic sign here. There's also a loading sign.
He starts talking about the stop sign and I'll do not enter. So, I mean, your, your proposal is to put a twelve-by-eighteen sign that says more, more love loading or just loading?
More just loading.
Just loading. Just loading.
Twenty-four.
I'm okay with the waiver.
Okay. And I thought, was the, was the stop sign gonna be put on the pavement? Or is that different from anything else?
That's addressed back in the question.
Okay.
So, um, we, we, we came up with it, yeah. They are gonna put in a stop sign.
Okay.
Number twenty-four. The proposed location, type of fixture, direction, illumination, and time of proposed outdoor lighting showing average ice blocks, uh, footcand patterns.
Well, trace really not a waiver.
Yeah, we do have a drawing.
Well, it's a, a design, this is a submission, ready? But it is a waiver.
They did. So it's not a waiver.
Right.
They, they put a waiver on the plan, so it should come off the plan.
So what were those, that waiver requested from that? Since it's been addressed?
Yeah, we had no waiver. A copy of any covenants, uh, deed restrictions, or exceptions that are included in the cover or a part of the track. Uh, we're asking for a waiver. We're not the property owner. We don't have access to those documents.
Wouldn't they be recorded?
Um, we did not look. Uh, we didn't think they were necessary to look for, for this application, uh, considering that we're just leasing off the, the property. We can provide a copy of the lease, uh, necessary, uh, some reactions, but, uh, we did not pull the tie and work.
I don't, I don't see the, the board move that information forward.
So you support that waiver?
Yes.
Uh, number twenty-eight. Certificate, uh, from tax collector and sewage attorney, no property taxes, sewer taxes or assessments for local improvements are due or delinquent. Um, we did provide at our, we filed our application with these documents, and we've not updated them. Uh, so not exactly sure of, uh, where we are with that, but we have to ask for a waiver of this condition.
It can be conditioned overall.
That's fine. Subject for this one. Thank you. Uh, all proposed soil erosion and sediment control measures?
Uh, yeah, we're, the site disturbs less than five thousand square feet, so the soil erosion, sediment control plan is not required.
Support it?
Environmental impact statement. Uh, applicant has submitted a report that addresses potential noise, air, and odor impacts. However, we have not, uh, addressed wastewater, flood hazard, flood hazard area impacts, parking within flood area, and light pollution.
Believe the, uh, well, the wastewater one will be addressed by the applicant. Um, she'll take it through and describe, file its own handle.
So we're asking for a waiver, uh, flood hazard area impacts, parking within flood area, and light pollution.
So, um, you're going to provide testimony right now regarding those issues, right?
Um, we are.
So you, you wanna move on to the next step?
Correct.
So in order for the board to say that you're complete, you gotta give me the testimony right now.
Right. Okay, so for the, uh, flood hazard area, um, it's all, it's existing impervious. Um, there's not really a proposed new development within that area except for...
Let me just help you out a little bit.
Yeah.
So we talked about this afternoon that you are co, uh, proposing to put a pad into the flood hazard area.
With the, with the exception of a pad.
DEP approval.
Right.
Pad with tanks on it in the flood hazard area. So as we discussed this afternoon, you're, you're planning to make an application to DEP for that, uh, flood hazard area.
That's correct. Yeah.
What about the wastewater impact?
We're gonna give testimony. We're gonna tell you the very minimums that we're just...
Well, so I think what the testimony, well, again, we discussed this this afternoon, was that the, the, um, the way that you, um, you package and, and manufacture does not have any impact to wastewater. That's kind of what the testimony involved. I think I just gave it.
We agree.
We agree.
Do you wanna say the nice words?
Yeah, we agree.
So I don't know what, like, parking in a flood hazard area, I don't know if the board wants to have any concerns about it. I don't, like, I remember the WOFFS development in Mount Holly. They had, they actually had required to put, TQ required them to put this sign, you know? I don't know, like, I remember the WOFFS development in the island. They had, actually had required to put, T Q required them to put this sign up. For that, I don't know whether that'll be the same thing, would you go to D E P now? Maybe they'll put up signage, say that you're parking on flood hazard area.
We'll, we'll stipulate that any regulation, any requirements of the D E P requires as part of their approval will become also incorporated into this protocol. We'll stipulate to that. Thirty-four treaties.
Uh, no treaties will be impacted by this project. Board's engineer had no objection to the waiver.
I have no objection to the waiver.
Uh, location of dimensions of surface or subsurface structures opposed to demolition?
Yet again, nothing, nothing's being proposed in that regard, so... And, and again, the board's engineer had indicated that they do not object to the...
I agree. I said that I recommend a waiver. We gotta move on to thirty-seven.
Okay, then traffic impact analysis, waivers requested. Again, the, the applicant will provide testimony later about, you know, how many people will be coming in and out and when in the hours of operation and all that sort of thing. Which I think we'll cover that later.
Again, you need that to, for finding out completeness to get to the next part of it. I mean, some boards...
I'm happy, I'm happy to do it. If you want us to put it, if you want us to put testimony on, on parking traffic right now, I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, 'cause some boards will make you do two different meetings. We try not to do that.
I'm happy, however you guys wanna do it. You want, you want to do it now?
You might as well, because it's a completeness issue.
As a member, I'm curious about the traffic.
Okay.
Because it's a very tight area and what's planned is what type of... Again, I'm coming into mid this. What is, is it dispensary and you're mostly selling product?
No.
What is it?
It's a manufacturing facility. We sell no product. We have no customers.
So it's a manufacturing. It's a grow.
No.
Grow.
No.
Manufacturing.
Manufacturing. Grow is...
So most of the traffic you're anticipating are going to be employees?
Uh, we will, we have seven, ten employees. It will be only employees and delivery trucks and trucks taking things out. So a couple of trucks bringing things in once or twice a week and truck taking things out once a week.
Okay. And I also understand a little bit, because if it was an open business to the general public, yeah.
I agree.
From my profession, that would be very difficult in that area.
Yeah, there's no customers.
But it's mostly preparation and...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're gonna explain the whole process in a couple of minutes, but we, I'm gonna do it now, I think, a little bit, just so I can be complete. So let's go to it. Let's go to it. Let's discuss vehicular and pedestrian circulation. Let's, uh, let's go to the, let's go to the plan. And let's talk it through. So we're really looking at, let's, let's identify this.
Plan is oriented with north, uh, up. The, uh, this is Mill Street at the bottom of the plan. This is the existing building.
What's, what, identify what this is. This is applicant's square. What do we call this?
This is the minor site plan, sheet one of two.
And we submitted this, so you should have that in front of you.
We'll mark that as exhibit A, and if it's already in the materials, that's fine. You have an electronic copy that's been submitted to the board secretary tomorrow.
Absolutely, you can do all that. I'll mark it eight-one. We did submit it. Now send an electronic copy tomorrow, marking one.
This one's revised when we said eighteen.
All right, tell me what this is.
So the site, this is the location of the site, Mill Street to the south, Buttonwood Run to the north. There's a municipal parking lot to the north. On the other side of Buttonwood Run, it's connected by a paved, existing paved street crossing access point. The site currently utilizes existing parallel parking stalls on the right side of the building, the east side of the building, and a one-way traffic flow in the east side around the north side of the back of the building and then out the west side. And exits back onto Mill Street. Personal commentary, then we went back and forth with the board professionals. We revised these parallel stalls and adjusted the number and shifted them to more easily accommodate vehicles maneuvering into the site from...
How many, how many parking spaces do we have now?
Uh, there, there's... There's seven of the parallel and then five, uh, regular ninety-degree spaces in the rear of the building, one of which is an ADA accessible parking stall.
So five and seven equals twelve. Um, how do the cars come in and go out?
Again, they come in on the east side and maneuver around the building and then exit on the west.
We've provided some parking and turning templates. Uh, we've provided some turning templates.
Yeah, they're on the side of the plan.
Okay, let's go through that.
Sheet two.
Eight-two? Eight-two is what? Tell me what it is.
Sheet two oh two of the minor site plan revised for seventeen twenty-five.
Okay, walk me through what this shows.
So, we're interested about the turning templates. This is like a delivery van-sized vehicle coming in, making the turn, navigating around that first parallel stall, and then maneuvering into a space behind the building and then back out and exiting around. As the board's engineer had suggested, I did not show the vehicle exiting, but add that as a part of residential compliance. Then the other part of the plan is the lighting plan. It shows, uh...
Let's take, let's take traffic for a minute. Are any questions, any other, any questions about parking and vehicle maneuver?
So, so if you have existing seven spots parallel with the building and there's, there's five spots in the back, that's twelve parking spaces on this pad for both businesses, this proposed business and the existing Voltaire dispensary?
That's correct.
That's gonna leave, so when your seven employees take up more than half of those twelve spots, what's gonna be the resolution?
So we have a municipal lot that's behind our property and we're gonna require our employees to park in the municipal lot behind, uh, the, um, our business. So they'll just walk across the bridge and cross the, uh, the water right behind us.
So you take that up with the town council about whether they can park there?
Just public property. It's public property. It's, it's vastly underparked. Uh, there's never more than four or five cars there. So we don't, we don't, unless the board requires us to take it up with them...
When R C E B C is in session, there's, it can be, it can be a lot of cars back there. Because the local college uses that lot to plot park as well.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say unless the board requires us to take it, there's no legal requirement unless you guys put it as a condition. If you put it as a condition, we'll go to council and ask for a resolution to, to disqualify it. So it's really up to you guys.
The other concern is you're saying you have delivery trucks. They're all coming in which entrance?
We have sprint vans. We don't have trucks.
Okay, and that again is how safe and helps.
Yes. And also what you have to understand is that the majority of this...
I just said trucks if you said delivery trucks are...
Yeah, the majority of this, this, this business is actually like back office. You'll see later on that there's a little sketch, that you'll see that the, that thirty, forty percent of the dispensary is actually public space. And they generally don't have more than two or three people, uh, in their, in their dispensary at any given time. So, and they agree to cooperate and have their employees park in municipal lots as well. So we'll probably have literally more parking than we need, uh, because everybody's gonna park behind, behind the hill.
So there are twelve parking spaces on this site?
Correct.
That won't be used by your, what is company?
Correct.
But are gonna be used by the customers going into the cannabis dispensary.
And are...
Those people are gonna just go through the lot and come out the other side.
Correct, that's what they do now.
Obviously, they've always been doing.
Correct. I, I, I mean, I also think you have to understand that if you had adequate parking for this site today, you don't have adequate parking. It's, it's a pre-existing condition. If you impose the same parking requirement for, that you have on the front for this retail, for this entire site, you deal at ninety parking spaces. So it's already a pre-existing condition is what it is. So I, I don't, I don't want you to get stuck on, hey, this is what it's supposed to be, because it could never be that and it hasn't been that and it never will be that. So that's important to realize.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm not stuck on that. I'm...
Yeah, I just wanted to explain it very well so we can draw a picture of it. Yeah.
My big concern is everybody's coming out this very narrow passageway on the other side where there's a large food bank where you have a lot of pedestrians and a lot of people gathering and congregating from the food bank.
Absolutely, it's been happening like that for X amount of years already. The exact, because we're not, we're not changing that condition.
No, I know, but that other building was vacant for a lot of, a lot of years too that you're going into, so there was no one using it. So it really didn't cause much of an issue with the neighbor because the building was vacant.
Maybe, maybe you can tell us how many trips those sprint vans are...
Yes, that would, that would again be helpful.
Well, back to that exit real quick too, that, that's why we're, we wanna control that with some, uh, traffic control devices, like signs and a stop bar. Make sure that, because we do, we also have concerns about pedestrian safety at that point. We wanna control the traffic, make sure they stop. Uh, there's a large mirror that's there so you can see who's on the sidewalk when you're pulling up.
Yeah, it's very, yeah, it's very difficult to see this, you know, the blind spot coming out.
So we, we don't think we're adding significantly to it. We think we're gonna have, you know, one or two supply trucks a day maybe. And we're gonna have one truck leaving a day maybe.
Again, that's, yeah, very helpful.
So very, very, very low, very low intensity vision.
Very truck today.
Yeah, no, 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 not that kind of volume. Not that kind of, not that kind of...
That helps everybody, I understand, yeah.
No, these are great questions. I'm, I'm, I should have been able to tell you that in my start instead of having to answer the questions.
Do you know what hours you're gonna be expecting deliveries? Is it normal business hours, nights or...
Uh, business hours, yes.
Typically, we get foundational testimony from somebody with personal knowledge. We appreciate, what we can do is just have her come later and say, she confirms or everything Mr. Webster said is wrong, which I got just...
You never know, you never know.
I've never seen that before.
The first plan that we were looking at on the other side, was that the site plan or was that the minor?
Minor site. Minor site plan, same idea.
Okay. What are the hours of operation?
Eight to five.
Monday to Friday?
Sorry, eight to six, Monday to Friday, and sometimes Saturday is about eight to two.
Uh, eight to six, Monday through Friday, and sometimes Saturday, eight to two. Eight AM to five to six, correct.
Yeah, I believe we have the, the specific date of plan.
Yeah, it's kinda hard for them.
I have some.
How many, how many employees are in this business gonna have now?
Uh, in the beginning, about seven, max ten.
You know how many employees Voltaire has?
Uh, four at any given time.
And then all you're gonna use in the municipal block, which is going to be eleven to fourteen slots?
Um, if that.
Why do you have to...
Because everybody doesn't have a car. They don't all have cars. Just for informational purposes, there are actually about eighty spots in the municipal lot.
Apologies if this is a question. We still need the completeness.
Yes.
Okay. Ages, which was a legend. Which, you know, I don't know if you have to go through a whole thing or a legal. And they provide testimony on traffic volume, or they provide testimony on how they're circulating, I guess, right? I'm not sure if they, that they asked by doing how they're circulating that.
Sounds very helpful. Sounds very helpful, no?
Moving into and out of the site. Titles of delivery trucks they addressed and frequency and time and availability, so if they're addressed, we... Do you know one particular item that was back in the...
So, and, and if we can also make sure the board secretary gets an electronic and a hard copy of the updated plans.
Yeah.
The message.
I think, oh, okay. I'll make sure.
So really the, the issues...
That's hard copy.
Based on the testimony presented, we support submission waivers, they do need the D E P approval for the pad, the flood hazard and, and the parking. Provide, they'll require all the employees to park off-site, municipal lot, and provide, they've just provided a copy of the updated plan. So I would request that you also provide an electronic copy, um, tomorrow.
No problem.
Any other space for the testimony that needs to be addressed?
We're gonna need more testimony.
Any other stop? If there are more questions, so is there a motion to, to be completed based on those testimonies, why didn't the audition have said?
I'd certainly like to do that. Do I hear a motion? Motion to deem complete based on the testimony and this here...
I think, you guys think we're complete?
The reason actually was out of the fact that how much water is gonna be needed and how much wastewater is gonna be discharged, and the fact that the existing facilities that are on our hillside would, would be adequate.
Well, remember, what I, what I probably need to do is bring up, um, one of my other witnesses and have her sworn in, explain to you who she is, and then have her talk about that. Okay, I'm happy to do that. If that's what, if, I'm happy to do that. All right.
Just about that one.
Yeah, just about that one.
Mr. Aaron, how to tell the truth, Paul, can you tell me about truth for the...
I do. So, um...
Your name?
My name is Perry Yiggins.
And your address?
My address is eighty-five Overhill Road, Ballackinwood, Pennsylvania.
And your affiliation with this application?
I am the founder and CEO of More Love.
And the question that was presented is, um, we're, they're asking about the adequacy of the water and sewer for the business that you intend to operate there.
Yes, so I got confirmation from, um, the, one of the owners of Voltaire dispensary that the water line coming in is one inch and that the sewer line is four inches. And that is satisfactory to meet all of our needs.
Based on the fact that you have production that doesn't require excess amount of water?
Exactly, so the production that we intend, um, does not require any more capacity than the one inch.
How much water do you require for the facility?
So, um, we plan to scale over time and in fact, beverage production is not allowed at this point in time. One of the products we're producing is beverages. But when we are at scale, we're anticipating that we will utilize three hundred to six hundred gallons, um, of water on a weekly basis. Um, and that will be for rinsing cans and then we will also use, um, a slightly higher amount for, um, actually putting the water in the beverages.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. As far as, um, if something's exposing your facility and you have to clean it up and it has to go into the sanitary sewer system, what type of, uh, problems might the sanitary sewer system experience from the chemicals or the processes that are going on in your facility?
Why, why don't you describe the process first and then just talk about the chemicals and...
Sure, so for, um, beverage production, we... Sure, so for, um, beverage production, we will mix ingredients in a tank. That tank will then be chilled using the glycol and CO2. And then the contents from the tank will then go into the individual cans. Um, those cans will then be sealed, and it's a very tight production process using a canning line. Um, and then to the extent that we have any, um, a can or cans that need to be wasted, then the contents of those cans will be mixed with soil or kitty litter and then disposed of. So in accordance with the regulations from the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, we are required to, um, make any sort of cannabis item unusable, uh, and then dispose of it. Thank you.
So, uh, just to follow...
Oh, sorry.
Excuse me. Um, so you agree that to comply with all requirements of the CRC?
Yes.
Related to disposal, production, security, and so forth, correct?
Yes.
And all the representations that were made by Mr. Webster and also by Mr. Patterson as to operations and circulation, that they, to the extent that they provided factual, uh, information, you agree with, with the representations that they were accurate, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Now that that question's been addressed, do I hear a motion, uh, deeming the application complete?
Subject to those conditions are stated and also the compliance with CRC requirements for operations.
Is there a motion before the board?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, should we do roll call or can we vote by affirmation? Roll call, Madam Secretary, please take roll call.
Apologies. Uh, Mr. Adler? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dow?
Yes.
Chairman Klein?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Sancier?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford?
Yes.
Great, the application is deemed to conclude, we can move on to the subsequent testimony.
Good evening, my name is Almarra Webster, and I'm here still representing More Love. I'm from Collin Foley, and, um, my first, my first witness this evening, um, would be my engineer, Daniel Patterson. Do you need to re-swear?
No, just, just a little.
All right, man, uh, let's talk about our, um, existing condition, uh, and then we'll talk about our proposed condition. And we'll go through all the details, um, that we've been asked for in the review letter by Mr. O'Leary.
Okay. So I sort of touched on some of this before, describing the site with, uh, Mill Street to the south, Buttonwood Run to the north. It's an existing masonry, uh, commercial building. It's divided into the existing dispensary in the front. We're proposing the cannabis manufacturing facility in the rear portion of the building. This site plan contemplates seven parallel parking stalls on the east side of the building, five ninety-degree parking stalls in the rear of the building, one of which is an ADA accessible space with access to the rear door. There's some landscape buffering proposed in the northwest corner of the site, uh, where lots of residential use, uh, as was suggested by the board's professionals. I'm sorry to interrupt, if anybody's phones on, please silence it and turn it off to make sure we don't have any other interruptions during the main group meeting. Please and thank you. During completeness and testimony was provided regarding the use of the adjacent municipal lot for fully parking, in order to facilitate that, we provided some additional lighting in the back.
Can you grab the mic or something?
We're actually, um, if you wouldn't mind pausing, we're gonna swap out that microphone. We'll do some back issues, so if you wouldn't mind going ahead and using this one. Hold me just a little? Yeah. Let's talk about, let's talk about parking. Let's talk, let's go, let's put the record, let's talk about how many parking spaces we have, uh, how many we need. Let's go through that in testimony. So I just mentioned we have, uh, the, the seven parallel parking stalls on the east side of the building and then the five ninety-degree stalls in the rear of the building, one of which is ADA accessible and access to the rear door. And then, uh, I had started to mention there's a municipal parking lot immediately adjacent to this site that has a existing paved accessway across the Buttonwood Run. Uh, that municipal lot has eighty-one parking stalls. And it's our plan to have the employees utilize those parking stalls and then cross into the site, which is why we've, uh, provided a lighting plan to facilitate that by, you know, making it well-lit and safer in the rear portion of the parking lot leading up to our building. Okay, let's talk about, uh, the loading, uh, spaces. We have one loading space, we should point that out. Yes, one load, there's a loading area that's striped and unused, uh, so it's not obstructive. And, uh, that's where items will be brought into the building. Uh, this, uh, focus on how to receive the load for scale. Just point out the loading area? Yeah, it's right here in the, uh, northeast corner of the building. And also I noticed that we have about one ADA handicap accessible. Yeah, it's the one closest to that striped area and the closest to the door. Okay. And this is the pad that we discussed.
I'm gonna interrupt right there because I have a comment in the letter. And so how is that the, the closest space to the door? Which door are you referring to?
There's a...
Door at the back of the facility, that, that's not the closest space to that door?
There's a door here on the, on that corner of the building. Yeah, it's labeled as, uh, entry. There's a...
That's what I was just at. Double entry there.
Yeah, there's double entry there.
Thank you. So you're utilizing the loading space as you're part of your ADA accessible, uh, access?
Yes. So how do we fix it?
Well, maybe, maybe what you could do, I mean, your handicap sign, take, take the, uh, wheel stop. I think that was one of my recommendations, announce your, your handicap parking sign on that, and that'll give you some room to maneuver into the side.
So we agreed, I think we agreed to put ballards? Yeah, we're gonna replace those wheel stops with...